All right. Good evening, everyone.
I guess we're in.
Let's try and get everybody's attention.
Yeah, I heard you. Come on.
So, uh, welcome everybody to the Sep- uh, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, uh, committee of the whole meeting. So we're gonna ask clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Here.
Councilmember Meek.
Here, and in the correct order.
Councilmember Lohberger. Councilmember Keel.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Handy.
Present.
And we do have a quorum.
Thank you. And Councilmember Lohberger did let us know she wasn't gonna be here tonight. And so now, if everybody would please stand for the pledge.
Welcome ladies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Uh, approval of minutes, they're in your packet. Everybody got any questions on the minutes? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go with Amy Craig, Bruce Smiley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. I would call on Chief Futur, but he's already at the podium.
Good evening, everybody. Quarterly fire department report. Thank you. I have to excuse my voice. I got a summer cold that's doing its best to kill me. As you can see up here, this is our quarterly fire department report. We ended up with a thousand incidents in our fire department, uh, with the majority of those, as usual, being rescued emergency services. Um, this is a breakdown of our calls or our types of fires with eight of those being residential homes. We had several public events, including touch a truck, squealing on a square, uh, our car seat clinic, uh, our car seat clinic is, is a huge program for us. We were there today. We have people come weekly to, to learn how to put in car seats. We also give away car seats. We're, we're partnered with the health department. Uh, it's a huge program for us and great for our community. Happy to be a part of that. Hosted a hype luncheon, uh, and several other end of the school year events. Uh, as you can see, we had lots of training. We trained constantly at the fire department, um, and, and brought on five probationary firefighters. For our EMS division, we ended up with, uh, just over twenty-nine hundred runs. We have seen a significant spike. We've talked about that with the EMS board. Over the last five months, we're averaging over a thousand runs a month, which, which is a spike for us. But that is over the last five months, so that seems to be a norm for us, with the majority of those being nine-one-one calls. I will say, as an EMS update, is, is there's lots going on with that. Uh, we, it, as you saw on WHOP the other day, and, and we let the ambulance board know the other day, we are revenue above expenses with the new building company since we've been with the building company. Every month that we've been with them, we are revenue over expenses. We have paid the city back a hundred percent of the payroll that we owed them. We still have the five-hundred-thousand-dollar loan that's out there at zero percent interest, um, but we do have one-point-two million dollars in the bank as we sit here today. So we are on the right track. We're still working hard, um, but expenses are expenses, but we, we are on the right track. We're, we've done much better with that. Are any questions? All right.
Jump on in there.
Code enforcement. So we had, this, this was our code enforcement instance for this quarter, uh, with the majority of those being property standards. It's grass, trash, and weeds, nuisance codes, stuff like that. Fifty-three of those being structures. That, that's our property maintenance or, or building code violations. Um, our focus has been abandoned interjunct vehicles, unsafe dilapidated structures, overgrown grass, trash and weeds, uh, litter and rubbish. As you can see, this is one of our, uh, homes that we cited. This is our heat map for the city. This is not only places that we hit, but this is where we have the majority of our complaints and our, our calls. So one of the things that we've learned with code enforcement is, is information to the city. We're doing our best to put it out there so that people know how to properly not only make a complaint, but how that complaint works. So we've started with social media. We've hit that hard. We also have a couple of, uh, town hall meetings coming up. Uh, I've got those dates here. One is October the first at the Kenneth Bates Community Center at five o'clock, and the other one is October the twenty-eighth at the Boys and Girls Club at six o'clock. We're gonna hit that pretty hard so that the, that the citizens know exactly how those complaints work and then what the process is. Uh, we get a lot of people who call and say, I've never, never received this, or I didn't know about this, or I made this complaint and it never got addressed. And so every complaint that we make gets logged, it gets looked at, it's, it's, i- if you click to the next page, I'll show you a little bit about that. So this is our report of concern. I would ask anybody to use this function because once you use this function, it goes into our software and it's locked. We have to address it. And then, and everything gets tracked. I can, anybody, anytime, and, and several council members have called and said, hey, this, this person called me and said they made complaints on this, and we look it up in our software, and we, we just haven't heard of it. Uh, now, you can call the office as well, and as soon as you call the office, what she does is she puts that in our software, which is Acela, which is the new software that y'all bought and purchased. And so it's logged, and then it has to be addressed, and it's tracked throughout the history. And so if you go to this website and click this report of concern, it walks you through the steps. It's, it's pretty simple. Uh, and of course, we're, we're trying to put that out as much as we can. The next one. These are some of the structures. So we ourselves have taken down twenty-eight structures to date. That's not just in this quarter, but that's since January, since we've taken over. And, and when I talk about these structures, these structures are structures that have been needed to go for a long time. Um, a couple were fires and burnouts, but this structure hadn't had utilities to it in over ten years, and so it had been sitting there. And the more we get into this, the more we find that, that these structures are out there, and it's a process. We're going through them, but we're out here every day. I will also say that we've taken down, I believe, eight other structures where the homeowner paid to have it demoed. Click to the next one. This is the after picture of that demo. Once they demo that property, they, they do the groundwork, they, they sow grass, they put in straw, so it's not just a, a blank canvas. It's, it's, they cleaned it up pretty good. This is another structure, um, that had, um, people living in it. Uh, it hadn't had utilities again in several, several years, uh, that, that needed to go. It was not the people that owned the home in there. They had no idea that, that people were living in there. They were squatting in there, and they were starting fires in there and cooking in there and, and doing those things. And, uh, we also have had children playing in some of these structures. We've had people call and say, hey, we cannot keep our kids out of this structure in this neighborhood. Can you please do something with it? And so that's, next one, please. That is the inside of that structure. And that is now what it looks like. Are there any questions on code enforcement?
Any questions for Chief Futur?
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve. Now we're gonna call on, uh, Josh Durham to come up and give our quarterly public works department report. I believe, Josh, this is your first-time flyer up there, aren't you?
First time, first time.
First time. As he said.
Learn from Steve, you know.
I keep, I keep doing that good. Not that smooth. Uh, I'm street department, uh, street division superintendent, and as far as we go, um, this is my quarterly. We cut back overgrowth in fifteen alleys, rightaways, and intersections. We inspected two thousand storm great citywide, uh, filled approximately eighty potholes, made ten street repairs. I'm still working with utility companies for old utility cuts. Uh, a hundred and six street signs made, repaired, and installed. Paved three-point-five miles, completing our twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year paving project. Abated over, or we abated two-hundred-and-thirty-eight properties, ten city lots mowed weekly, debris clean, we helped, uh, the county clean up for two weeks with two dump trucks, uh, after the May storms. Emptied receptacles downtown, city-owned bus shelters three times a week, accumulated five-hundred bags of trash, provided support for city events. Uh, completed twenty-one drainage projects. I wasn't gonna go through all those unless y'all got any questions or anything. Uh, next. Uh, our Fort Campbell having about the best year they've ever had. Uh, sixty-two decorative signs installed, thirty-two handicap symbols painted, eighteen straight arrows painted, a hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand linear feet of road striping, and a hundred-and-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-five linear feet of parking lot striping. That's my first time. So I got, unless you got any questions.
You might got any questions for Josh?
Just one. Hey, Josh, do you mind sending out that drainage project list if you don't mind?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Derek, we had no idea he was gonna bring up working with utility companies on those cuts, but it could not have come at a better time.
He paid it, too.
All right. Well, thank you, Josh. Now we're gonna call on, uh, Daryl Anderson, uh, to give us an IT update.
Good evening, uh, Chairman Keel, members of the, uh, committee. Um, I, now I know everybody now, so I don't have to reintroduce myself, but I am Daryl Anderson, the chief technology officer, and I'm here to give you a, a real brief overview of some of the things we're working on and technology, our major projects and initiatives. Uh, you heard, uh, Chief Futur talk about Acela. That's, that's where I'm gonna start. Uh, Acela is basically an enterprise software platform that allows us to use a single central, uh, database to manage a lot of the operations across many, quite frankly, almost all of the departments of the city. Uh, we've, we selected this and have been working on it for about a year now. We had a lot of old software that was just kind of in need of replace, wasn't secure, written in a lot of old languages that weren't even supported anymore. So we've moved to Acela, and now, uh, after, um, a lot of study and learning and figuring our way out, way around it, uh, we're using the products for, uh, property tax management, uh, licensing, business filings, code enforcement, um, as you heard Chief say, as well as, uh, abate when the city has to take care of things that folks or businesses don't take care of. We manage all that and track all of that, uh, in this Acela software, and it's been a great tool for us, and we'll, uh, we'll probably try to expand it even more in the years to come as our central solution. Uh, we've already had some other cities in the county reach out to us because they've heard some great things about what we're doing, and even today, I talked to a mayor of a city who was really interested in, in how we're doing with Acela, and she's looking for, I won't say the name of the city, um, but, you know, it, it rhymes with Slimbrook. But anyway, they, they're, they're, uh, looking for a solution, and, uh, they're, we're gonna, they're gonna come and kind of look at what we've got going on here and see if they can replicate some of those things with the software. Um, this year, the city's phone system, we're finally getting that updated. Uh, we started working on it, my predecessor did, back in twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, for the phone system that we're using today. Uh, and at the time, it was a great solution, and it let, let us do everything we needed to do, but imagine, I mean, not a lot of people have home phones anymore, but imagine if you were walking around with a cell phone in your pocket that was from twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. Uh, there's a lot more features and security, uh, provisions in this new solution, and we've been working on it. We've replaced nearly all the desktop phones, and this fall, we'll replace the actual core components of the system so we can get that, uh, where it needs to be. And I appreciate your support in helping us get that done as a capital project this year. Interestingly, we, um, you know, we focus a lot on security and, and technology. It's not only just data security, but in securing our environment, our data environment. Uh, we applied for and were awarded a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security to replace our network switches. Uh, we've, uh, settled on extreme networks hardware. Uh, it's, it's reliable, they're responsive. Uh, the, the grant has been awarded. We're just waiting for the Kentucky, the state board funding folks to say, okay, you guys can go get the money and spend the money. Uh, Melissa and the finance team are working with us to put together an RFP to, uh, buy the gear as well as get it installed, configured, and we're, we're excited. It's long overdue. We have some pretty old pieces of equipment in our infrastructure. Uh, some of them, the oldest one I've found so far is, uh, manufactured in two thousand and nine, and it's just, it's, it's, we don't wanna be on a hope and a prayer like that, so we're gonna try to get, get that, that done as quickly as we can. And, and many of you remember, we stepped on a project to add cameras along the rail trail. We added a lot of cameras throughout the city. In the past year, we've installed an additional almost hundred cameras throughout the city using grant funds from ARPA, and the committee let us do that. Uh, today, we have over three-hundred-and-thirty cameras throughout the city, uh, that are managed by IT, monitored by several departments, especially police, and it helps us, uh, make arcan contribution toward, uh, security and, uh, public safety. Then I want to talk to you a bit about Microsoft Office three-sixty-five. That's our new standard for office software, and the only reason I bring it up, not that there's anything special about it, but it's really made a change to our, uh, support environment across the city. We have almost two-hundred-and-thirty computers or so that employees use, and when we first started using Microsoft as a standard, you could buy a license, and it was just kind of a blanket license, and it lived with the machine and stayed with the machine. So anybody walked up, started to use the machine, the, the software was there, you just log on and you could use it. Microsoft has changed their licensing model where each license goes with each user, in this case, each employee. And so one, one machine can't accommodate three or four people. That license follows the employee. So long story short, we have to buy more licenses because we have employees that need to be able to use the software. So, um, we've worked with our, you know, the mayor, and we've gotten our budget where we, we needed to be to try to accommodate that. We may ask for some changes as we move forward for the next couple of years, but, uh, it's working out, and it's, it's, it's a change, and, and we're managing through that, and that's just, it is what it is. We try to use and accommodate best practices for all of our technology throughout the city. We talk to other cities. We, uh, we test and we demo things before we make the decision to pull the trigger, and we try to break it before we give it back to them to say, yeah, this will or it won't work for us. But really, our focus, again, is around security, and one of the first sniff tests that anything we implement, uh, for technology has to be security and reliability. And we do that with everything we do, and we try to adopt best practices. We've put together a standard operating procedure manual for all of the technical staff. Uh, this document, book actually, uh, lays out how we do everything we do in, in IT, whether it's supporting software, installing software, installing hardware, uh, even down to our policies that affect technology, uh, you know, password requirements, configurations, those sort of things. We've got, we've got that all documented, so in case we have changes in personnel or, or equipment or process or, or practices, it's all kept there. It's kept current, and it's shared among the team, and the, uh, mayor's office and administration have a copy of that document. And then, like I said, I know you'll get tired of me saying it, but we've got to be secure. Uh, local governments are often the first victim for, uh, breach attempts. Uh, we are working furiously to integrate, uh, best practices there. Uh, two-factor authentication, just a means of proving you are who you say you are before you're allowed onto a software application or computer. If you've ever logged onto your bank account and they text you a code or a digit, same, same kind of thing here. We do it today with our financial management system. We use two-factor authentication there. We do it with city email, and as of this month, we started, you know, testing this with the, this building and the employees that work here, using two-factor authentication just to log into your computer. If that computer is plugged into the city network, you have to prove who you say you are through two-factor authentication. Password is fine. You put your password in, it says, okay, now what is the little code? They just come to your phone, or we can have it call your desk phone, but we're just trying to secure our environment in the best ways we can. I know Melissa and the finance team love that we're doing this, and she's been volunteering as our, our test group, but, uh, we're trying to work. We're trying to work the bugs out of it so we can deploy it across the rest of the city, but you have to prove who you say you are. And, and a lot of employees have, have, uh, laptops and other devices, and if they're left there unprotected, uh, we don't want anybody getting into our networking problem. And then finally, uh, we're working on identifying a solution for, uh, uh, mobile device management, MDM. We talked about it a little bit last budget season, but I'm gonna be pressing for it even more this year. We're trying to find something that's affordable, that's manageable for our team, but this is just a means of managing the devices that are wireless, whether it's a tablet, PC, or an iPad, or a cellphone that the city has purchased for the employees. We wanna be able to know where it is and if it's lost or stolen. We need to be able to shut it down or track it and find it. So those are kind of the, the major things that we're doing now, and the details of each of the things I talked to you about was in the report I provided in your packet. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Daryl. Now we're gonna call on our CFO, Melissa Clayton, for the debt service update. We are gonna assume tonight you are who you say you are.
Okay. So I was asked to bring you guys a debt update, um, of where we currently are. Um, so the first slide I have, I, I started off with our principal balance. I kind of did this debt up, update like I've been doing all the updates for last fiscal year of where we started, the beginning of the year, how much debt we paid off last year, then kind of where we are this year. So principal balance on all of our debt was twenty-nine million, eight-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars as of July one, twenty-twenty-three. Um, last year, we made principal payments of one million, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars, and we paid interest payments of nine-eighty-six, one-fifty-four. So our principal balance at the end of the fiscal year, June thirty, was twenty-eight, five-oh-five, which is what we started this year with. Um, I was asked to kind of tell you each bond that we have issued, what the bond was for, um, how much the principal payment is, um, and what the principal balance is. And then every time we issue bonds, we have to give a funding source of how we're gonna pay for that bond. So every single, every single bond, the yellow box is the funding source of what we told the bond company how we would pay for the bonds. Um, keep in mind, as we've gone over in some of our council trainings, that, um, paying our debt service is mandated by KRS, and we don't have an option. We have to budget for it. So, um, let me also just say that I haven't included any new debt that we've issued this fiscal year, so this is all still focused on last fiscal year. So, um, the oldest bond we have is from two thousand and thirteen. It was for the police station renovations. The principal balance, seven-one-twenty-three, was three million dollars. We paid a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar principal payment on that bond. Um, it'll be paid off in February of twenty-thirty-eight, and that bond is funded by our capital account. Um, we do a transfer from capital back to the general fund that covers this bond payment. The next bond we have is, was issued in two thousand and fourteen. This is the, um, Bruce, the convention center. It's funded by the TIF. I give you guys an annual TIF report, but this bond is paid for by that TIF. Um, so the principal balance, seven-one, was three-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-six-twenty-two. The payment, um, last year was twenty-five-thousand-two-thirty, and then the maturity date is November of twenty, uh, thirty-three. Also, as part of that bond series, um, the visitor center was built, and they are paying that bond payment back through transient room tax, tax. The city doesn't pay for this bond. The visitor center pays us through their transient room tax to pay this bond, so this is not an expense to the city. Um, the, the principal balance, seven-one-twenty-three, was four-hundred-thousand-three-seventy-eight, and the payment is twenty-nine thousand, the principal payment was twenty-nine-thousand-seven-seventy. Maturity date is November of twenty-thirty-four. Next is the Thompson Thrift Grant Bond Series two thousand and sixteen. Um, the principal payment, July one, was two million, three-fifty. The payment we made last year was a hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand. The maturity date is November of twenty-thirty-seven, and this bond is paid by the city and the county property taxes, um, associated with the building of the building, um, that the money was used for. So the county reimburses the city a portion of this bond, um, to help pay for the bond payment. So we use our property tax, and they use theirs, and that's how this bond is paid for. The next one is, um, the Wynn's Bond, number one. That money was borrowed in two thousand and seventeen. The balance was six million, two-hundred-and-forty-thousand as of July one. The principal payment was two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand. The maturity date is twenty-forty-two, and that debt service is paid by the insurance premium tax. When, Wynn's Bond, number two, was borrowed in two thousand and eighteen, the principal balance on it was three million, one-hundred-and-ten-thousand. The principal payment was one-oh-five. Maturity date, August of twenty-forty-three, and it is also paid by the insurance premium tax. Warehouse Renovations Bond Series two thousand and nineteen. The principal balance is eight-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand. We paid four, forty thousand on the principal last year. Um, the maturity date of March of twenty-thirty-nine, and that bond payment is paid by the rent revenue, um, related to when we remodeled the warehouse and the, um, rental agreement that we got for, um, that building. Family Aquatic Center Bond Series two thousand and twenty-one A. Um, this was refinanced in two thousand and twenty-one for a lower interest rate. Uh, the principal balance, seven-one-twenty-three, was seven-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand. We paid three-hundred-and-one-thousand dollars off on that last year. Charity date, February of twenty-six. We can't wait. And this bond is paid for by general revenues. Then we have the Old First City Bank Building. Bond Series two thousand and twenty-one was also a refinance. Um, principal balance, seven-one, was seven-oh-eight-nine-twelve. The principal payment is fifty-three-thousand-two-eighty-five last year, maturing February of twenty-thirty-five, and this bond is paid by the rent revenues we receive from Old First City Bank. Municipal Center Construction is, um, also a refinance we did in two thousand and twenty-one. The principal balance is six million, one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand. Principal payment was a hundred thousand dollars last year. Maturity date is February of twenty-thirty-seven, and that debt service is paid by the capital fund, part of the money we transfer back, um, along with the police station. Both of those are paid from that same transfer. Our next bond series is the Ascend Element Bond Series. We took out in, um, two thousand and twenty-two. The principal balance as of seven-one-twenty-three was three million, six-hundred-and-twenty-thousand. We didn't make any principal payment on the Ascend Element Bond last year. Uh, it was delayed until their opening to make the first principal payment. We've been paying interest only. Uh, that principal payment begins in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Maturity date on that bond is February of twenty-forty-two, and that debt service is to be paid by the payroll tax revenue that would be created by the new jobs. Fire Station Number Five, the Purchase Bond Series two thousand and twenty-three A. The principal balance, seven-one-twenty-three, is two, was two million, three, three-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand. Principal payment last year was a hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand. The maturity date is March of twenty-thirty-three, and that debt service is paid by the increased business license revenue. So looking forward, this fiscal year, we'll start our principal balance, July one of two thousand and twenty-four, is twenty-eight million, five-oh-five. We're scheduled to make payments this year of one million, five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand. Interest this year will be nine-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty. June thirtieth, our principal balance would be twenty-six, nine-eighty-five. But like I said, I didn't include any bonds we have issued this fiscal year. So, um, that kind of concludes my debt service update. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about money we've borrowed.
Jeff.
So I noticed in the presentation the other night, we do have extra, or, or we have more cash than we have had in reserve. Is that, that's correct? Are there any of these bonds that, due to the fees or the interest, that it would make sense to go ahead and pay those off or pay those down with some of that extra money?
Yeah, so bonds are guaranteed for ten years. When we sell bonds, we cannot pay them off for ten years. So if you guys, the very first one I talked about was the two thousand and thirteen bond series. That really, right now, is the only one we could pay off. I think its balance was three million. Oh, it was flat at three million. It's, um, two million, eight-fifty, beginning in fiscal year, July one of twenty-four. So we owe two million, eight-fifty. That one we could pay off. Um, I would have to look at, um, the interest rate we're paying on that bond to make a recommendation whether or not it would be a good idea to pay that bond off early. We did get contacted by Mark Rawlings, I think, um, asking if we wanted to refinance. We could save some money. He, he had recommended, but that bond series was combined with other bond series, and so we really needed all of us to agree to refinance, and I think the HWEA and Service and Stormwater Utility both had monies connected to the two thousand and thirteen issue of the bonds, and neither one of them were interested in refinancing. At the time, we were like, we think the interest rates may go down, so we don't wanna refinance right now, and then the interest rate go down and us be stuck for ten years. Um, that would also be up to council. But I'm happy to do those calculations and see if it would say how much. But I'm happy to do those calculations and see if it would save, how much money it would save us if we paid that bond series off early.
You know, I would say as part of routine practice or, you know, annual review or whatever it is you're doing on them, if you see something that makes sense, or you think you'd want to bring to us, why don't you do that as part of this, you know, when you come and update us?
Yep, I'm happy to.
Is it?
All right. Anybody else? Derek.
What, what kind of a fee, if any, do we have to pay in the event that we do refinance?
Right, so it's just like borrowing money for a house. If we were to refinance, we would, we would pay closing costs and all of that again, so there are fees associated with that. Usually our bond closing costs, it, it just depends on, on how much time it's going to take everybody to do what they have to do for the issuance of the bonds, so.
So you just have to weigh it?
Yeah.
And see if it makes any sense at all?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Question?
Ms. Francis?
Thank you. I noticed when you have the maturity date on it, is that the, like, February, is that the date that the payment is due, the month that the payment's due?
That is the month the principal payment is due. On all of our bond series, we pay the interest in six months in intervals. So if it's February, we pay the interest in August, and then we pay the interest again in August, and the principal in February. So every six months, we're making bond payments.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Only once going twice. You're off the hook.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Derek, you're taking a beating tonight back there. I'm sorry, man. I had no idea. Because I'm going to call on myself now for the monthly Agency Board Council appointee reports. I'm on the Solid Waste Board. We've got, got a lot of activity going on out there. Got a lot of good things going on at Solid Waste. I'm happy to report that. We, first off, thanks to the council, Mayor Troy. We asked for, you know, letting us kind of contract with the city for financial services. Melissa and her team have been out there and are just doing a really good job getting everything. Just, it's great the way we've got structure and budgets and those things. Can't, can't leave Kenny Gabor out. Kenny came out and absolutely helped us redo some policies and some best practices. So we've got, got a lot of good stuff going on there. If you've noticed, on the, the city website, we have contracted with Mercer Group, which is the same company that CDS Board contracted with several years ago, looking for a new GM. That process is, is underway. We've got some two-hour Zoom calls coming up, and then at least one all day that we're all trying to, you know, work in our schedule. I can't leave out, we have recently posted, I think that job closes, and you tell me if I'm wrong, back on the second row Fri, tomorrow, for kind of an office manager, HR manager. They're going to have some HR requirements coming with that. So we, we really got a lot of good stuff going on out there. Employee morale is, is, is really doing well right now, which is, which is good for, for all of us. And far as everybody knows, I hadn't heard anybody not getting their trash picked up, so that's what we're shooting for. Any questions on anything that I can answer out there? All right. Did I leave anything out? All right, perfect. No, no unfinished business? Look, man, some of us have day jobs, Travis, so. Derek, I'm going to call you up now. You, you do have items A and B under new business, so just roll right through, just kind of let us know, and, and if you want to take a few shots back, I don't blame you.
Not at all, not at all. Thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of council, Mayor Knight, distinguished guests. It is a pleasure to be with you tonight to talk about some updates to our drinking water program, as well as some updates to our projects. I asked Mayor Knight if he had any advice for me tonight, and he said, keep it short, keep it simple. So we will do our absolute best to do that. It is a lot of information, but I think it's important information. As you're aware, drinking water is in the news almost every day, and we want to provide you some updates relative to our water quality. Have with me tonight Daniel Lancaster. He is our Director of Water at HWEA. He is also the smartest guy at HWEA, so I travel with him quite a bit. He's going to bring some updates to our lead and copper rule revisions program, as well as PFOS. And again, you may have seen some of those headlines in the newspaper and in the news. When he is finished, I'll come up and give you some updates on our projects. After that, you do have two municipal orders that are to help us submit loan applications for funding for some very important projects that you will see, that Daniel will explain, and that I will help to explain as well. So thank you all for your time tonight, and Daniel will come and bring those updates.
Thank you, counsel. We're going to bring two updates to you all today. One is the lead and copper, and, and one is PFOS. And when people want to talk water, they always ask me about lead and PFOS. And so lead, lead is not new to us. The EPA has been requiring us to, to monitor for lead in copper and drinking water since 1991. We've had a few updates since then, but in 2021, because of the Flint, Michigan, and, and the Washington DC, and a couple of other cities that had disasters with leads, the rule really got some more changes. And so in 2021, the lead and copper rule revisions went into effect, and in 2023, they announced that there would be some more regulations with the lead and copper rule improvements. Those have not been put into law yet, but we are expecting that to happen sometime this year. Some of the things that have changed is that, one, is the EPA wants us to know exactly what kind of pipes we have in our system, if they're lead, if they're not lead. Before, we were able to just sign a statement that said we didn't have any lead, but now we have to verify every single, every single service line, both on the customer and on the HWEA side. There's some sampling requirements for childcare facilities. We're going to have increased monitoring and reporting requirements and mandates of replacing lead service lines if we have them. There's a little bit lower level for lead that we're, we're allowed to have in the system, and we're, they've changed the rules on how we communicate with the public. So starting off with the inventory, one of the things that we have to do is verify all of our service lines. HWEA has been doing that in two, two main ways. One is that we are able to look at records and say, they're after, they built after 1988. 1988 is when the lead ban went into effect, so if it's after 1988, we can say that there's not lead in, in the lines. And then we've been visually verifying every service meter box that, we can't, we can't look at records and say, and this is just a shot of how we do that. We can clean out the box of any kind of debris and look at the service lines, both HWEAs and, and the homeowners, and identify that lead service line. And we have a guy with an iPad that records that information and puts it in our GIS system. This is what our GIS system looks like with the lead. Those little half-circles are colors that indicate what kind of service line is on both the public and the private side of the meter box. Progress state, so we're, we're almost done. We're 99.9% through verifying every single service line in, in our service area, which includes Hobbisville, Pembroke, and Crofton. That's over 18,000 service lines that we've verified, and to date, we have no lead lines that we've, we've encountered. And so for, our next step here is the childcare facilities. The new rule does require that 20% of elementary and middle schools and 20% of childcare facilities be sampled for lead every year until you've, you've sampled them all. What we're proposing is, is to get on that as our next step and to have that done within, within a year or two. We've, we've got some requirements on how education material we give to the schools, and that only exclusion on those schools and daycares if they were built or had all their plumbing replaced after 2014. There's just a list for elementary and middle schools that are in our service area. Childcare facilities, these are listed by the Kentucky Inspector General. So we've got some work to do about sampling all of those schools and daycares. Some of the monitoring and reporting changes is that we're going to have to change where we sample our sites, we're going to reevaluate our system based on our inventory, and, and focus on areas that are, could be at high risk for lead sites. And if a lead service line is found and replaced, we've got to sample that within three to six months after that's being replaced. And we've got some notification of customers if we've got to immediately notify them if the lead levels are high. So the service line replacement, there's, there's requirements on that. Luckily, you know, being 99.9% through the system, we're, we haven't encountered any lead service lines, so we, we're luckily going to get to skip that if we don't find any. But if we do find some, or if we encounter some during normal work, we're going to get those replaced. Some of the communication things is that we're going to put our inventory, we have our inventory, we're going to make that available to the public, so if someone calls and wants to know what their service line is made out of, that we can provide them with that information. We're going to put it in our consumer confidence report. That's our annual water quality report. We'll have some mandatory language about lead and, and our inventory in there. Some of our key dates, that submitting our inventory to the state is due October the 16th. We've, right at the end of that, so we'll be able to submit that fully by October 16th. By October 1st of 2027 is when we're, will be a start, or we're required to start sampling for schools and daycares. We're going to go ahead and start that probably next year. We'll have, early next year, we'll have a meeting with the, the school system and start, start doing that sampling early to get that out of the way. And as part of the proposed laws, if we do have any lead service lines, they're going to be mandatory replaced by 2034. But again, we, we don't think we have any. So what's next? We're going to submit our inventory, going to start sampling schools next year and, and childcare facilities, change our sampling plans, and make, make sure we meet all the public notifications. And of course, if we see any lead lines, we will replace those. Any questions or comments on lead service lines?
Questions there?
All right. Thank you. And the second thing we want to give you update is on PFOS, and that's, I get a surprising number of questions about PFOS in our drinking water. And, and just a little background, those PFOS are chemicals that are man-made, they slowly break down, they can build up in your body and cause lots of health problems, there are over 9,000 of them, and they've been manufactured since the 50s. But where, where you find PFOS is food packaging, those, wrap your greasy cheeseburger in, in a wrapper, and somehow all the grease stays on the inside is because of PFOS. When those rain jackets and shirts that just repel all the water and stains, probably treated with PFOS. And it's even in like personal care items like shampoo, dental floss, nail polish, in your, in your cookware. And of course, one of the big sources has been firefighting foam. It's great for putting out fires, but it does contain PFOS. And so since 1950s, PFOS has been put in a lot of things, and everywhere you go, you're exposed to it. And some of those exposures can come from eating fish. It's one of those chemicals that build up in, in your, in your tissue. It doesn't break down very fast, and, and so also food grown near factories, food packaging, comes from your cookware, your clothes, even your carpets, it's been treated with, with PFOS for, for stain resistance. And there's also, if your drinking water has PFOS in it. So 2023, the Division of Water sampled all across Kentucky for PFOS. You see all the dots there, the blue dot there in Christian County, says that they detected PFOS, but it was below what the, the, the legal limit is going to be. You see a lot of the red dots along the Ohio. That's mainly from the Ohio being contaminated from, from industrial pollution. And so the, the rule of going into effect, or had, went into effect in June 25th, is for, for six PFOS, it established a level that is acceptable. It requires drinking water systems, systems to monitor quarterly for PFOS, and it recommends best available technology for treatment. And so granular activated carbon ion exchange, nanofiltration, and reverse osmosis are, are the things that the EPA recommended for removing PFOS from drinking water. Of course, it's always got some public awareness in there, and if we get a violation, how we notify our customers. Here's the, here's the levels. These are maximum contaminant level on the, on the top two is four parts per trillion. And so a little bit of history, we've been sampling for PFOS since 2014 we started, and that was in parts per billion. So that was the sensitive method that they had at the time for detecting PFOS, and we didn't have any detections. So and since then, they've now been able to detect it at parts per trillion. There's, there are some of our sample results. In 2023 is the one the state sampled for us. We did have just a small detect, one part per trillion. We've done four rounds of sampling through '23 and '24. Three of those four samples had no detect on 29 PFOS, and one sample had a, up to a two part per trillion on PFOS. And so the, the only sample that's a little concerning for us is the most recent, when we, June 25th sample, and we were, got that sample, the state actually collected that for us, offered us sampling, and we, on two of those PFOSs, we were over, over the limit, over the, you know, the maximum contaminant level on, on our North Quarry. And so these results, results are very mixed. We've had some really good results, and we've had one that was not good. It is concerning for us. Here's just a, a, a map of where we're at right now, and we're in that initial monitoring up in the top left corner. We're, we're just sampling. We haven't, we're not in the, where the rules have mandated us to do anything yet other than just sample. So that, here's, here's the compliance state. We're in that. We've completed our initial monitoring. In 2027, we'll start requiring to monitor again every quarter, and in 2029, they've given us to 2029 to make sure that any kind of treatment we need is in place and that we meet all the rules on that. Our next step is we're just going to continue sampling and monitoring right now. One of the reasons we're here is, is the funding for the best available technologies for the GAC and membrane filtration. Our current plant was not designed to treat anything at parts per trillion. And so this is the next level. Like, like the lead that began in the 90s, this PFOS is, is beginning now, and it's, this is not the end of PFOS. We'll have more and more regulation, and, and these treatment strategies are, are what's recommended to treat it. And then Derek's going to talk about some of the projects that we've got to, to help us maintain compliance.
Just to summarize, just a little bit on Daniel's presentation. Number one on lead and copper, just the great thing about that, we have zero lead as our background in our groundwater. So if any contamination is in the system, it's coming from the pipes, and it, it more often is coming from the customer pipe, not the HWEA pipe. So again, as part of the, of our compliance and our continued monitoring, we will continue to do that going forward, but that's the great news on lead and copper. The great news on PFOS is, is really very similar. We had a whole series of testing, and we had zeros in a lot of those quarterly tests, and so we're, we're glad of that, although we have seen some detects. And so what I will say is, 27 years ago, when I started this, in this business, we were removing pollution in parts per million. And so to give you an idea of what that is, it's $1 in a million dollars. And so to give you an idea of what that is, it's $1 in a million dollars. That's one part. In 2012, the EPA tasked us with removing pollution in parts per billion. So that is $1 in a billion dollars. Now in 2024, they are asking us to remove pollution in parts per trillion. So that is $1 in a trillion dollars. And so per Daniel's presentation, if you saw that map for the state of Kentucky, just about every drinking water system in the state is going to have to do some kind of a project in order to mitigate PFOS because PFOS is so ubiquitous. It is in everything and it is everywhere. So that's just kind of the summary on where we are right now. Again, our compliance dates do not start until 2029. So we have some time to do projects and be ready to mitigate and remove that pollution from our drinking water. So with that, some of the projects updates I would like to present to you is on our drinking water side. And we do our drinking water loans by phases. So we are finishing up our phase four drinking water improvements projects. It was a total of seven projects and I'm pleased to say that five of those projects are completed. We actually just bid contract 132B and that will come before the HWEA board this month for their approval. We expect to sign a contract around November and for the contractor actually to be done with their project sometime next year. And so with those projects, these are just some of the diagrams. This was contract 132. This was our tank project rehabilitation projects where we actually went into every elevated storage tank. We drained those tanks, we cleaned them, we repaired them, and then we painted them. That all of that work was necessary in order that we comply with a rule called the disinfecting byproducts rule, which is our TTHM HAA 5 rule. And I am pleased to say we're in full compliance with that rule as well. The contract that we just completed was 132A and it was roughly three miles of 24 inch from Locust Grove Road down to South Park. As I stated just a moment ago, we just took bids on contract 132B and that will be 24 inch from South Park down to I-24. And then the very last project is our 2 million gallon elevated storage tank at South Park. We are nearing 100% completion of design on that and we expect the design to be completed by the end of the year. And then we would like to bid this project sometime after the first of the year. And we think the project will take anywhere between 18 to 24 months to build. Any questions on any of SRF Phase Four Drinking Water Improvements? Our next, again, we follow phasing of our loans. And our next phasing of our projects will be SRF Phase Five. Now, to this point, this is part of our visioning. This is part of our strategy that we use in order to do projects in sequence so that we complete our mission of always providing compliant drinking water. Phase Five is a plant project. Phase Four was a distribution system project. It is composed of six projects and they all have some type of either a repair or replacement of the existing system or some type of a filtering upgrade to where we either expand the plant or we provide filtering so that we can remove a pollutant. I am very pleased to say to you that all the projects have, all these projects have been approved by PAD, the Water Management Council there, they were submitted to the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority for ranking and for funding. And of all these six projects, the most important project got selected and got funded. And that is Exhibit E or Project E, which is our GAC Granular Activated Carbon Membrane Filtration System Project. So on this exhibit, and it's a little bit hard to see because this exhibit is real busy. But these are the long-term repairs and the long-term improvements that we are recommending under Phase Five. Again, the total of all these improvements is $51 million. We are not obviously recommending that we do the total project now, but we do recommend that we take the GAC funding and the GAC loan application, which is part of our new business. Any questions or comments for Phase Five Drinking Water? Our next item of business is actually Phase Eight, which we didn't skip over any of the phases. It's just we're further along on the clean water side than we are on the drinking water side. Phase Eight is actually, oh, that's. Phase Eight is actually our clean water plant. There has been a vernacular change in the industry. We no longer call it sewer. We no longer call it wastewater. We now call it clean water. And so the clean water plant project itself, that was a project that this council approved back in 2020. And it essentially is for the expansion of the existing clean water plant from 6 million gallons per day to 9 million gallons per day. And it was a complete renovation of all of the structures. Anything that was mechanical, electrical, it was at the end of its life cycle and needed to be replaced. This photo right here, what you see on the left is all of the 1983 structures. A lot of those 83 structures had been abandoned and in place and were no longer in use. What you see on the right is the 1995 structures. And again, those structures had to be completely renovated. All of the mechanical parts, all of the electrical parts were at end of life and needed to be replaced. And I am pleased to say that that project should be completed within the next 60 days. And we would love to have a ribbon cutting and invite you all to come out to our clean water plant. I always tell people what we do is not very sexy. It's not very glamorous, but it is very necessary. And so we're very proud of this project and we've got some drone flyover footage for you here. This was the old Hammond Wood wastewater treatment plant. Again, it's located at 128 Gary Lane. It was originally constructed in 1983 and had a treatment capacity of 3 million gallons per day. In 1995, it was expanded from 3 million gallons per day to 6 million gallons per day and was also renovated by changing the treatment process from use of primary secondary clarifications to the use of oxidation ditches for nitrification, denitrification, and return activated sludge processes for nutrient removal. In June of 2020, this council approved that we proceed with the contract and we commissioned roughly a $48.3 million expansion and renovation at the plant. We expanded the plant from 6 million gallons per day to 9 million gallons per day. We also changed the nutrient removal process and we are now using an anaerobic reactor to remove phosphorus and total nitrogen. Project was necessary because most of the original wastewater structures in 1983 were decommissioned. And in 1995, the structures there had to be renovated as well because all were nearing end of life. All of these improvements were made in order to make sure that we can always treat and discharge clear, clean water to Little River. Project again is scheduled to be completed within the next 60 days and will serve this community through the year 2058 and beyond. We're actually out right now and the contractor is finishing up his paving and we're also finishing the site work. And then the last update I have for you is our Phase Nine. So this is the Oak Grove Clean Water Plant. And if you are curious, we actually own the sewer system in Oak Grove back in 2008. We bought their entire POTW for the sanitary sewer side. We, since that time, have done a study which tells us what we need to do there at the clean water plant. And it recommended a very similar project to what we did at our clean water plant here in Hopkinsville in the form of expanding it and renovating it. Our Phase One improvements will be to renovate the existing structures to include fine screening, grit removal, replacement of our aerators with fine bubble diffusers, screw press and solids de-watering building. And then our Phase Two will actually be to expand the plant from 720,000 gallons per day to 1.25 million gallons per day. And that also includes influent pumping, core screening, volume in our aeration basin with new blowers and diffusers and additional clarification and disinfection improvements as well. In your MO tonight, we were only funded for the design, which is roughly a million dollars. We, if they handle this project the way that they handled the clean water project on Gary Lane, they fund the design first. Once you complete the design and you know how much you'll need in order to build your project, then they come back and fund the construction second. So this is an exhibit that just shows some of the major elements of the project as we know them to be right now. And Mr. Chairman, that includes all of the information that I have. If you'd like me to go over the MOs, I'd be glad to do that as well.
It's a lot of information. So the MOs that you're bringing, do we have those pop up on the screen? Let's pop them up. He said you can pop them up.
Yes, sir. Again, the Kentucky infrastructure is who we use for funding our projects. KIA was actually created in 1988 and it is the mechanism for funding construction of local public works projects that are large in scope and nature. And just to give you the example, the clean water project that we did, again, roughly $48 million, we received funding for that at an interest rate of 0.7%. So it's not free money, but it's almost free money. We have enjoyed low interest rates on all of our SRF loans, anywhere between 1% to 3%. And usually the amortization period is 20 years. With this particular MO, again, we're, KIA has invited us to submit a loan application for $1 million for the expansion and renovation of the Oak Grove project with some loan forgiveness in the amount of $417,554. And so we, to my knowledge, well, we did get a million dollars worth of loan forgiveness at our clean water plant as well. But this is part of at the KIA and the SRF's program of assisting communities in providing some loan forgiveness in order that we can do the projects. So, Mr. Chairman, that comes in the form of you from a staff recommendation of HWA as well as HWA's Board of Commissioners.
We're looking for a motion to forward.
I make a motion, we forward it on to council.
Second.
Doug, I got Amy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then.
There's a second one.
We have our other MO.
Yes, sir. This is our drinking water MO. And again, these projects and the funding applications, when we submit these are competitive. So if Hopkinsville passes on this money, you have other communities who'd be glad to snap it up. From the standpoint, there were 200 drinking water projects that were submitted disintended use plan to KIA. They only funded the first 10. Our project was number eight. So out of the entire state, our project had enough points in order to be invited to be submitted. Just again, to recap the project, of all of the SRF Phase Five projects, we needed, we needed this one. This one in the form of GAC and the form of membrane filtration is the project that we need in order to remove PFOS, in order to be in compliance with our DBP2, which is the THM HAA 5 rule. It also will help us with taste and odor if we have any taste and odor issues. So this project is vitally important to us. Also, very pleased to inform you that we also received roughly $5.2 million worth of loan forgiveness with this project. What we are recommending, because we need to spend about $5 million to build the tank, we recommend that we apply for a grant through the Kentucky Waters Grant Program or the Water, hang on just a second. I had that right in front of me. The Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act. Those are two new grant programs that we would like to submit for funding on our tank. If for whatever reason neither of those funding programs, grant programs fund our project, then we would request permission to bond that project in order to be able to finish and execute all of SRF Phase Four. And again, Mr. Chairman, that comes in the form of a recommendation from HWA staff and the HWA Board of Commissioners.
Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I think Jason Bell got that motion. I'll give Doug the second on that one. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ocean Carrie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Zach and Clue.
Yeah, that's it.
I thought I'd check. Just being sure. The man is excited about water. All right. Actually, we're going to kick over Item C and D. My name's on D, but we're going to give that to Doug as well. So I'm just going to pass it to Doug, do small business commission and then clarification on the real rehab.
These are two real quick, just housekeeping measures. As you know, you formed the Small Business Commission in May of last year. They've been meeting on a regular basis. They want to meet more. So they have made a recommendation to amend the ordinance to allow monthly meetings instead of quarterly meetings. The reason that's important, if they meet more than quarterly, those are special called meetings. You can't veer from the agenda. So they want to have regular monthly meetings. The other request was that the, if any member misses more than three meetings, then they would automatically be removed from the commission. I've discussed that with the mayor and staff. It's my recommendation that we not do that, that we allow discretion in the event that a good member of that commission is ill and misses three months without, with a valid excuse. The mayor should have the discretion to keep that member on the commission. So I would recommend that we forward this to council with the one change, and that would be changing the quarterly meetings to monthly meetings. That would be an ordinance amendment.
Make a motion.
Second.
Do have a discussion.
So does the mayor have a member of city council on this committee, commission, committee? You want one?
Nope.
No?
Nope. Board's set right now. Board is set right now on that and y'all, y'all agree to it when we done it. But if y'all want to put a council member on it, we can do it.
I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, we do have it on a lot of others. It's up to y'all.
It's up to y'all what y'all want to do. If y'all want to put a council member on it, that's fine. We can do that in January when we point council members to board.
Point of order.
I thought there was a reason.
Point of order, he can bring it up at the council meeting.
Yes.
Point of order, he can bring it up at council meeting. It's not a part of the discussion.
No, I was just saying, I thought there was a reason we set it up that way originally. I feel like I remember that. I feel like I remember that.
I'm done, I got my question answered.
Yeah, I think you should.
Like I said, if y'all decide y'all want to put a council member on it, I don't care. I just I'm just going by where we set it up back last year when we set it up. But if y'all decide y'all want to change it, it's all good to be changed.
Travis has time to be on more boards than that.
I'm good.
We got motion second.
Discussion, discussion. Doesn't the doesn't the don't the rules currently state that if a member misses a certain number of meetings, they may be dispositioned?
That's correct. So there's a requirement not to miss that many, but you can be excused.
I see.
With discretion.
I have a quick question too. So if they decide down the road that they want to go back to quarterly meetings, can they do that or would that require another change of the ordinance?
That would require another ordinance.
Okay, I just just wondered.
They're meeting very about every two weeks right now. Trying to get some stuff together so they can bring it back to council. And their board is really working hard at it. They've got it broke down in four or five groups now instead of just having this great big round table discussion. They got finance, they've got committees on everything right now going on. So they're really trying to bring it back together.
That's good. Anybody else? No, okay. You just had that look.
He did.
It's okay. So the motion's on the floor to allow them to go to monthly meetings. We've had to go to all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item involves the rental rehabilitation incentives program that you just passed by municipal order on August 20th. And I've talked to Tom about this. When this program was being administered, it there was discovered to be an ambiguity in the policy. The first paragraph provides that one of the reasons for the rental rehab program is to bring newly acquired residential rental properties up to current code standards. But then if you go down under eligibility, rental property owner eligibility, the first bullet point provides structuring compliance with basic property maintenance code is documented by city code enforcement. So it would be my recommendation, I've already given an opinion letter to Tom, that it's my opinion that the intent of the committee was to bring properties up to code and to exceed code pursuant to this policy. It would not be to limit this to only properties that don't have any code violations. So as if you just read this strictly, if if there are any code violations at all, you would not, an applicant would not be eligible. So my recommendation is at the end of that first bullet point, in order to clarify this ambiguity, would be just to add the words at the time of final inspection. So that if the code, if there are any code problems, if they're brought up to code at the time of the final inspection, they would then be eligible for the payment pursuant to this policy. So if you're in agreement, we would need to forward that to council to amend the municipal order that was just passed in August.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor. Any discussion, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye. I'm standing from this side. Good move. I'm sitting here waiting for something else to happen. Sorry, checked out for just a minute. It's been a long night.
I'm on back, baby.
I was waiting on Derek to be like, wait, I forgot something. Anybody got anything under other tonight? All right. Anybody at all want to make a motion to adjourn? I got Travis and Amy. Now, Matthew Handy, I heard him that time. I finally heard him. All right, we are adjourned.